This is July 22, 2013, 5 o'clock. Special call work session to order. I have no opening remarks. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Yes, Mayor J. Max Davis.
Here.
Councilmember Rebecca Williams, District 1.
Here.
Councilmember Jim Iyer, District 2.
Here.
Councilmember Bates Madison, District 3.
Here.
Councilmember Joe Gebbia, District 4.
Present.
All present.
All right. Agenda items: Review of Century Center Office Park Annex and Review of Century Center Rezoning. Do we have any presentations?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. Just to give you a brief introduction, and then Susan will take over from there. As you all know, we did receive an application for annexation by the owners of Century Center, principally the Highwoods Group, as well as Emily Fisher Crumb, who owns quite a bit of property in Century Center. When the application was filed with the city, we had to comply with state statute regarding annexations, one of which was that we had five days upon receipt of the full application to forward that on to DeKalb County for comment and review. We did that within the five days, and we did hear back from them a few weeks following that submission, and everything seems to be fine on their end as to the city's intention of annexing the property as far as this application goes. Part of the annexation application included a master plan for a property that's about 100 acres in size, much of which is built out. There are some opportunities for redevelopment and further development within the 100 acres. As a result of that, looking at the built environment and then looking at the intention of the property owner, it was determined on a staff level that PC-3 zoning was the most appropriate zoning that would require a less cumbersome way of moving forward with their overall project. Heretofore, under the county zoning of O-I and O-D, the property owner had to go through SLUPS in order to be able to move forward with either heights or signage or other things related to the development. So this application is really two-part. One, it's an annexation that's been submitted by the property owners, and then the rezoning is what has been initiated by the city. So you'll hear a presentation tonight by-
So the city is the applicant for the rezoning?
Correct.
Okay.
So Susan Cannon, your Community Development Director, will give you the presentation. This was heard by the Planning Commission this past Thursday evening, and what they heard was only the rezoning. They had no jurisdictional authority to review annexations. That is held only with the mayor and council. So with that, I'll turn that over to Susan.
Susan?
Thank you. I don't really have a lot to add to what Marie indicated here, the city manager indicated for the annexation petition, which was accepted. And then, we did receive the petition on July 1, and we did serve the county notice in that we had five days to serve the county. I did note on the record, which is later, is after the annexation case, is the zoning case, I did note on the record during the Planning Commission hearing that there's an adjustment to the acreage. The original petition and the original rezoning application contained 100.229 acres. We did remove a portion of the property to the northwest area of the tract, and the acreage has been reduced to 100.051 acres. And I'm sorry that we don't have the visual here with us at the moment, but we will have that later for the actual public hearing and for the presentation later on. I really don't have a lot to add relative to the annexation, but if you'd like, we can move into the rezoning. It's really the purview of the council.
Does anybody have any questions for Ms. Cannon?
I have some questions on the application.
For the annexation or the rezoning?
The annexation.
Okay.
Have we received any additional? You provided in our package what I believe are copies of the application and the request. Have we received any additional information from the applicant that's not included in our package?
From the property owner?
Yes, from the property owner for the rezoning.
No, sir, nothing else from the property owner.
And the reason I ask, running through the list of properties, the survey shows what I believe to be the Marriott property is included, but it is not listed on either of the sheets that were provided by the applicant, either by address or by tax ID number. So it's included in the overall boundary, but it's not included in the application.
It would have been listed as signed by the property owner. It's the Groundleys, and the Harpers actually own the property that's the Groundleys.
Ms. Crumb owns the property, and her executress is her niece Suzanne Harper.
Again, I'm looking at the list of, I don't know, there's 18 properties that she has signed for on page 36 of the package, and none of those include the parcel that the tax records show the Marriott to be on.
Let me just make a note on that while we're going through-
Has this been brought up to you all previously before just now?
Pardon me?
Hasn't?
No, but maybe I can clear something up. Mr. Iyer, the Marriott parcel is not a standalone parcel in the overall development of Century Center. It's a part and parcel of a larger tract. I believe the tract-
So it's not going to say Marriott parcel on the-
No, no, it's not. It's a larger-
Well, it shows up in the tax records as a separate tax parcel.
Okay.
With a separate owner.
It's tract G in your overall composite.
Where does, where, of the list, what is it included in?
By this, Jim, you mean that-
The signature list?
The signature list, yes.
Which of the 12 or 13 or 18 of them would it be under? Would it be with? Is it G?
If you'll give us a moment.
Sure. Is there anything? We'll come back to that. Are there any more questions from the council?
A couple more.
Okay.
I see in the application the Crumb power of attorney. Did you receive anything from Highwoods that verified that the signature is an authorized signature for the property owner?
That package you have before you is what we have received.
So we have nothing that shows that there's been any corporate action taken to allow the applicant to sign this request?
Are you talking about like a resolution from the public company?
Yes.
Mr. Paquette serves as their vice president for the Georgia Division and has the authority to act on their behalf. I don't have any transmittal if that's what you're looking for. Ms. Harper has a power of attorney.
Which is included in the application. But I'm just surprised that we haven't received anything from the applicant that verifies and certifies their signature.
Well, they, the applicant and property owner, Mr. Paquette of Highwoods, is going to be here for the meeting this evening along with his attorney, and I'm sure he'll be happy to answer that question and what authority they have-
Did he sign the application?
Yes.
Did he sign it as an officer?
No.
As personal?
Signed it as an individual with no designation behind his name.
Make note of those questions. We'll get you an answer to those.
Mayor, to answer your question, I received the package this morning and have reviewed it last night and today. Actually, I've looked at it online, so to answer your question, this is the first I've seen it.
From today? You mean you got this today?
Well, I saw it last night.
Okay.
Had a review at 2:00 in the morning this morning, and then got the physical package today.
Okay, but prior to that. Mr. Iyer, did you not receive anything earlier than that from Ms. Cannon? I know she sent that.
Yeah, it came in over the email, but unfortunately, I was not able to look at it until, you know, the first I saw it was last night and today.
Any other questions from council?
One more. You mentioned you provided a notice to DeKalb County about the annexation. Have you provided notice to them about the rezoning of the property as required under later sections of the annexation code?
We did provide notice to the county, and we did not receive any responses from the county. We, the only response we received was from the county GIS department, but it was more in relation to annexation rather than zoning.
But there's no mention in the letter that you sent of the rezoning of the property, which I believe we're required to provide the notice of a rezoning if it happens within a year of the annexation?
The first paragraph in the annexation notice identifies for the county that the city is considering the rezoning process to PC-3.
Okay. So the answer is yes, we did provide notice, or no, we didn't?
We did supply notice to the county relative to the annexation process that we were going to consider zoning as well. We notified the CEO's office, we notified the clerk's office, we notified Community Development, and the county attorney's office by mail, email, and hand delivery.
And I have copies of the returned register receipt of mail, copies of the signed copies
that were delivered to the county, and a copy of the email transcript, if you'd like to see it.
I don't think it's necessary. Any more questions from council? All right. Thank you, Ms. Cannon.
Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions of staff in general on this? Okay.
Do I understand that they, that the county, though, has 30 days to respond?
Yes, ma'am. The county has 30 days to file an objection. We have been indicated, the county's indicated to us that they have no objections.
Okay, thank you.
Who did that come from? Did that come from?
From Stacy, I don't recall his last name, GIS, who's in his transmittal said that he handles, he's the department that handles that.
But we received nothing from planning or the CEO's office?
No.
Were you asking about the rezoning portion?
We're doing it.
All right, so my question on the rezoning is, I think a more proper term is that the city, am I correct in saying a more proper term is that the city is required to classify this land in bringing it into the city? Would that be a more proper expression?
Right, and through our analysis of receiving the application, a determination was made as to what the best zoning classification would be to fit the property.
Right, and if I understand correctly, so if you bring, if you annex any piece of property, it comes in without zoning, without zoning classification, because you can't just bring existing, you have to apply it. And the city, our city planning department said, look, this is, the PC-3 is the right zoning application.
Right, and that was, that was reviewed in conjunction with its current zoning in the county of O-I and O-D.
Right.
And it was felt that PC-3 was the better fit.
Yeah, and I, I think that that is a smart recommendation, but I also would like to know, what is the downside if we just bring it over as it's currently zoned in DeKalb County and say, we're going to apply that? Is there any immediate downside?
I would say that the immediate downside would be if you bring it in under O-I and O-D without a future plan, then you're going to, then what would be required is that you would come back through another process to revise the plan again through another public hearing process.
Through a rezoning.
To rezonate, to a new master plan.
The reason I bring it up is that, you know, I've gotten some comments from residents who have said, you know, they are concerned about the rezoning portion of the annexation, and it seems that, you know, they haven't had time to consider this, they're considering the annexation portion of it, and I can understand where they're coming from. I can also understand the city's planning department wanting to apply the right code. But I think for the sake of public appearance and full disclosure to the citizens, if there is no downside, I'd like for us to consider bringing it over as it is currently zoned in DeKalb County and then allowing that full public disclosure process, because I believe from the Planning Commission's results, the city's shown a willingness to rezone it to a more proper coding. I just think from a public perception, it would have more time and more awareness that would benefit the residents for full disclosure.
And I think along those same lines, it would provide us the opportunity to receive a full and complete rezoning application that has considerably more detail and compiles more with the code than what we've received to date for this particular application. I think that the information received is woefully inadequate with regard to meeting the requirements of the PC-D and PC-3 requirements, and I understand that the city can waive those requirements, but I think that's a very slippery slope that we're beginning to go down by making the assumption that we can waive those requirements at this point in the process. And I think also, in all honesty, we're giving up a huge amount of future potential to receive improvements in that area. You know, we do not know what the project's going to look like. We do know that if we approve the PC zoning, that it's a $30 to $50 million entitlement for the property owner, we're getting nothing in exchange. I think by going through, as Bates suggested, the normal rezoning process, we will have additional information to review, we will have further studies on the impact of this project, and we will be able to look more closely at what improvements may be necessary to accommodate this doubling of the development on this particular piece of property.
Jim, you're referring to the site plan, correct?
I'm sorry?
You're referring to the site plan.
Yes.
Feels like we're in a formal hearing rather than a work session, but having said that, it's certainly the council's prerogative to do as you choose. We're here to implement it, we're the staff here to implement what you choose. Again, this was initiated by the city.
What's your opinion on how we should handle this or do this? The staff's opinion?
Well, the staff reviewed, reviewed the overall, the as-built and the master plan, and we felt that PC-3 was a zoning that recognized existing built environment and future use and future development of that area, whereas O-I and O-D is a little more restrictive. However, it does include SLUPS. This actual PC-3 district does not, PC-3, PC-3 district does not include SLUPS. The overall parameters of PC-3 would allow development to the potential of the site plan or the master plan that's included in the file, and it would allow different phasing and development to go through the land development process and building permit process fitted through the staff. It would allow it to move forward on its face with that master plan versus-
What's the advantage of that? What's, how does it benefit the city of Brookhaven or the surrounding area to have it done that way? What would you say is the main reason?
I would say that that master plan, as in the file, allows for a smoother process, quicker process, versus having to go back through hearing processes incrementally as changes are needed, with the two-year waiting period in between each time-
What's the two-year waiting period? What do you mean?
There's a two-year period for successive applications every time there's a change. There's a two-year waiting period if there's a major change requested. It requires a two-year period, waiting period for public hearings.
What would be an example of a change that would have to, would make a, would put two years, put them back two years? Any kind of change?
Is it for a change or for a denial?
No, it's also for a change. If there's a major change under successive applications, if there's a major change, I'm trying to think of one off the top of my head.
They want to reverse two of the pods or something? Swap two, you know, Pod A to Pod G and reverse?
If you change floor area from, that's a good example, if you change floor area from Pod 5 and would like to apply, or one pod to another pod, that would be considered a major change, and that would require a public hearing before the Planning Commission and City Council.
Is that OD zoning, I'm not even sure that's still in the code, is it?
It is.
And OD is the low-rise, is that right?
And office distribution, yes, ma'am.
Okay, so five of their buildings are those low-rise, like one or two stories? That they, I know they've expressed an interest in rebuilding, which I can certainly understand.
I think those are a couple of the buildings that may be over 50 years old.
Right, they're old, and it's appropriate for higher density. Would they have to go through a rezoning on each building if we brought in the zoning as-is?
Well, of course, I'm going to always tell you the answer to that is it depends, because we'd have to look at each, each particular situation to see what applies to what, but, and how they bring it in. Are they going to bring it in together or separately?
I see.
Actually, based on, I'm sorry, based on DeKalb records, the OD is most of the high-rise stuff along 85, and they rezone that pursuant to a SLUPE. The O-N-I is the internal stuff that basically from the creek to Chambley, excuse me, from the creek to Claremont is O-N-I, from the creek to 85 is OD. So the high-rise were all developed based on a-
But the, is it-
Based on a SLUPE.
The Century Center Boulevard, before you get to the creek, I think the area that you're mentioning is, is, it is before the creek, and it's on Century Boulevard, and it's those low, I think a lot of doctor's offices, like one story, the older one.
But that's the O-N-I property.
Okay.
The OD property starts at the creek and goes over to 85.
So back to, my question was, the advantage of doing it the way the staff has recommended as opposed to doing it a different way could be that for any major change to the site plan or to what the future development is, you'd have to go back through the Planning Commission. You mentioned a two-year period. When does the two-year period apply?
It's from the day of action taken by-
Until, what does, in two years, you have to do what, or you can't do what by then?
You can't rezonate.
You can't ask for a rezoning to deal with a major change.
But the initial zoning that the city's applying is not considered a rezoning, is it?
Well, we're applying a zoning category to the property. Well, we're proposing a zoning category to the property of PC-3.
And would we have to wait two years from, let's say, just for the sake of argument?
We're the petitioner, we're not the applicant, we're the petitioner.
Okay, so they wouldn't be held to-
So on a going-forward basis, it would then be an applicant. We're the petitioner.
So I guess the question is, if we brought it over O-I, OD, would it, would they have to wait two years to rezonate to PC-3, or could they come in later this year or early next year and rezonate to PC-3?
Well, you have the authority to shorten that timeframe. I think it may be six months, I'll have to double check, but I think that you can shorten that timeframe to bring in an application. But the letter of the law, but it has to come before you to ask for you to waive it to a shorter period of time, but the letter of the law's two years.
So Planning Commission's, well, then to us?
Yes.
Okay.
As I understood, the whole point of this is that when I looked at the map of Century Center, it looked kind of like a little bit of a patchwork quilt of zoning, and we had heard that they had had to go through several SLUPS, which is almost like a full zoning process to get a special land use permit, building by building, I assume, and often it's just a height change or something like that. But it's a big process. The PC-3, I believe, is a relatively new zoning category that was envisioned to be, to allow mixed use. You know, it really breaks away from the previous zoning that kept commercial over here and residential over here, and now we all agree that really mixed use is the direction we want to go. So rather than trying to, you know, work within this sort of antiquated code, bringing over the PC-3 allows them that flexibility to move forward. I also thought it was our intent to be a little bit more business-friendly and to remove some of the regulatory process, unnecessary regulatory process. Now, I think we all want to have, you know, full public hearings and understand what is being built. What I think is a little bit different here, quite a bit different in fact, is that this is pretty much a built-out project. We're not looking at raw land here. There's a PC-2 zoning, I believe, on the Brookley project, but that was raw land, and it's coming in, you know, with mixed use of residential and retail, et cetera, and just having watched that since that's in my district, I know that staff is all over every land disturbance permit, every permit, the inspectors are out there. I mean, there's no lack of oversight, is what I'm saying. So I would just say, if we want to be a little bit more nimble and efficient and trusting of our staff to provide the kind of professional oversight that I think they're qualified to do, I see every reason to stick with the PC-3.
But I guess with all due respect, my concern is that, you know, and I'm not, I'm not opposed to, and I agree with you on the business-friendly part, but if we approve PC-3, this plan will never see the light of day again. Everything that will be done will go through staff, will go through staff. And, you know, it is a built-out environment, however, they're talking about adding almost 2 million square feet of additional office, retail, and also 500 apartment units to what is already there. So we're talking about doubling plus the amount of office space that is proposed for this project. So my concern is that if it is approved today, without any of the site plans, without any information that's required under the PC, I mean, if you look at the PC zoning, there's a list of 27 items that are required to be submitted for review of the plan. We have maybe three of those. And I guess, I just, I'm reluctant to approve a plan of this nature without sufficient staff review of the application, and also without sufficiently vetting those plans before a, in a public hearing. But, you know, we are, we're doubling the capacity of this project with, if we were to vote on the PC-3, and going forward, any plans that come in will never come before the public.
That's that question. Is that true? If we approve the plan as it's submitted, that this will never come back before us? We'll never see the light of day? I mean, is that-
If you approve the plan as-is, and as the future developer moves forward with different phases for development, as long as those plans are consistent with the composite and pod layout, and as long as the proposal is not a non-sustancial change-
And how do we fight, that's through staff only?
Then yes, you will not see, the Planning Commission and the council will not see those plans. If it is a major change, for example, there is a five-story building and they propose to do a 10-story building, then yes, it would have to go back to the Planning Commission and the City Council. If it's a 10-story building that they would like to bring down to a 5-story building, then I would not bring that to the Planning Commission or the council.
Can I make a comment on that too? And just to, if I may, to reiterate and then to try and reach a point here, I think what is different for you all on this is that you are dealing with a project that's probably 75% built out. And looking, you know, when a master plan comes in, it is identified, designed based on a pod-by-pod basis. Each pod consists of so many acres, and within that pod, it's designated as a particular land use, whether it's residential, office, medical, whatever the category might be. Underneath that category, it then lists a number of uses and density, even parking ratio. And what that becomes under a master plan is a mini zoning ordinance that has to be followed. The staff, your planning director, will ensure that that is followed. And the difference is, and Ms. Williams brought that up in regards to Brookley versus this project, you know, this is not raw land seeking a rezoning. This is property that is predominantly built out, that still has capacity to complete a build-out. It's seeking an annexation, and with that annexation, a determination-
And with that annexation, a determination by staff was made to assign the appropriate zoning classification. I would ask you, instead of, well, in addition to while you're looking for this specificity, I would ask you to concentrate too on the range and the densities that have been requested. Because under the master plan, the property owner, the applicant for the annexation, is seeking certain densities to go along with certain uses, whether it's multifamily at a cap of 500 units or if it's 12-story buildings to create a town center and that town center pod has been specifically identified. Those are the uses that staff has looked at twofold. One, if the property were annexed with this zoning and potential build-out, what's it going to cost the city to serve it? And more importantly, first question is, can we serve it? Whether that's through public safety, that's through planning staff, through administrative services and finance, all the departments that you have, public works. How is all that addressed and can we provide services to the property which seeks annexation with our current level of service without burdening your current constituency? So you don't want a project that's seeking annexation to come in that's going to require more cost for services while diminishing that level of service to your current population. So that's first and foremost. Secondly, because this is not raw land, you really can't follow the dictates of the PC3 zoning verbatim from the standpoint of seeking and requiring certain requirements. I think one component in there calls out for that they have to be public streets. This project is a development made up of private streets. I would encourage you not to seek that it be public streets because that would add a cost to the city to service those streets, to maintain those streets, to build those streets, and the main boulevard runs over a creek that I would not want us to be obligated for. The development has like a business association where all properties contribute to the total maintenance and repair of improvements. So if you look at that list that's under PC3, there are many items there that I would recommend to you that we would not want because of the financial restrictions and requirements that that would bring about. To the point of looking for specificity on a site plan and not seeing the light of day to come back to the planning commission and council, I've heard since the inception of the city that, as Ms. Williams said, that you do want to be business-friendly. You do want to allow projects to move forward that meet the vision of the city. And that's not to say to give everything away, but that's why you have professional staff. It's their responsibility to ensure that there is no deviation from a master plan in this particular case. There is no deviation that creates a substantial change from density assigned or building heights or parking, the elements that allow the development to move forward. That's what's critical to this. The site plan, the configuration of how these buildings are laid out is really up to your planning director to determine, do they meet the spirit for, if this is approved, for the approval or the assignment of allowances by the elected body? If it's determined that it doesn't, then the planning director's responsibility, as well as your city manager overseeing the planning director, is to ensure that it immediately gets back to the proper venue to review these significant changes. First and foremost, the planning commission with a recommendation, then on to the city council for approval or for further change. But what you're dealing with that makes this cumbersome, and I admit, it is, it's cumbersome, it's not raw dirt that's coming in. It is a built environment, majority of which it is built out, seeking for redevelopment, a town center for a pod that has listed with great specificity on density and building heights and specifically where it is by determining the acreage assigned to this pod and where that's going to go. So I would encourage you first, before you ask for a site plan, to determine if these densities and the use that is requested as part of the overall development scheme of the project as it relates to the annexation is something that you can live with. Now, as staff and as your city manager, I've worked with our finance director, I've worked with our police chief to determine, does this affect current adopted levels of service? Because that's important. And I've been told that from a police standpoint, to maintain our emergency response service time of three minutes, that we would need to add additional police officers. From the finance side on administration, no, there would not be any cost associated with that. The anticipated tax revenues that are to be received from this project more than cover the service delivery to meet your current standards of service. So I would ask you first to make a determination if the levels that have been sought within this master plan are acceptable. The layout of the projects and these densities and uses can best be handled from an administrative standpoint in your planning department, which allows the project to move forward in keeping with your overall philosophy.
So the allowable density under PC3, does that match up to what has been requested by, in the rezoning?
There are some densities that are higher than what's been requested in the zoning.
That's what I'm asking. So what is allowed in PC, so if we say PC3 allows this, that doesn't automatically mean that's what the density is going to be?
Correct.
So what we've got, the information we've gotten from the applicant is less than the densities in some areas than what is allowed?
Some is, some equals and some is less.
Some equals and some is less? All right, so if they try to change above that, would they have to come back before us? If they make a change saying, now we want this density for this pod, and when we apply, we ask for this amount, for the smaller amount?
If they, in their plan, they have 500 units shown for multifamily. If they came back in and said, we want 550, I would say, no. You have to go to the planning commission, you have to go to the council. That's a major change, you have to go through the process.
But, let me try, Jim, hang on a second, let me get a turn. The purpose of my bringing this up was to, you know, to get back to the crux of it. What's the downside risk? Because I can tell you that the public perception, if we rezoned or applied new zoning code to this is, why are you doing it at the same time of annexation? We really are thinking about annexation and now this zoning, we haven't had time to really hash it out or talk about it as a community and the site plan is at best very vague. And I think one of the things in PC3 is that the idea of PC3 is to create a pedestrian district, interrupt, you know, walkability, that walkable community. And I believe, if I'm not mistaken, the plan doesn't show any kind of connectivity between the pods and I know that Century Center really doesn't have any existing connectivity. I think the sidewalks between the areas are pretty limited. So I am, I'm completely behind the idea of being pro-business and I'm actually very behind the idea of zoning it to the correct zoning. I just think if there is no downside risk, let's annex the property, then, you know, a week later, they can come forward with a full plan for PC3. We have a, you know, the planning commission's already shown that they're recommended, they've recommended to approve this rezoning. So I think that, the writings on the wall, that it is the right thing to do, but I think in the effort for public disclosure and to, you know, and if there's no downside risk to the property owners or the city, because plans, as I understand, are really not imminent for construction, then to me, it just seems to have, you know, it has all the advantages with no disadvantages. And that's why I brought it up.
The two-year thing, I think that's what...
But does that apply though, if we're the applicant in this case?
You're not the applicant, you're the petitioner.
So we're the petitioner, but in this next, if it were to be rezoned a week from today, let's say?
Well, you, the process...
Whenever the next one is.
My opinion is that an applicant, because you're the petitioner, I believe that the first application that comes in from an applicant would not have to comply with the two-year waiting period. But any, but changes after that, I would say, would have to...
Which is true, consistent to, you know, we brought the property in when we became the city. Theoretically, it came in unzoned, we assigned zonings to it, we're now going through rezoning processes for pieces of property, so, you know, we, so that, yeah, the two years doesn't seem to apply.
Does the six-month thing apply? Six-month?
We'd have to change that.
Neither one of those would apply to an applicant that comes in initially, since we're the petitioner. But subsequent to that, if there were changes that were major, then yes, it would apply.
So what is the downside to doing it the way that Bates and Jim suggest?
Extra step.
If there is one.
Certainly an extra step in the process.
There are extra steps.
Well, on behalf of the property owner, there is no predictability. They have to come back and they have to ask for the PC3 zoning. I think...
Did the applicant request a rezoning of the property?
No, they did not.
So they're okay with the unpredictability of bringing it in as is?
But their plan doesn't comport as well with the OI and the OD and in review of that, their application for annexation is contingent upon them being able to do their master plan. I would feel more comfortable for you all if, instead of requiring the applicant to come back and seek a rezoning, that you allow and give consideration to the annexation with the densities and the uses requested and subject it to a site plan to come back before the mayor and council.
I guess, I guess where I have concerns...
It's Joe's turn.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Joe.
Thank you. Well, we have struggled with this, obviously, and it's apparent here and we've been struggling with it even before this. Individual conversations I've had with council members, we have some serious concerns, obviously. First, Susan, I want to thank you for what you've done and the job you've done and the materials you put forward. I know it's been expressed by other people, but it's really been helpful. As council member, I'm appreciative of it. One of the concerns I've had with this has been if things go bad, looking at worst-case scenarios. And we've discussed this. And only recently have some of those concerns been put to rest and I'd like to bring something that's been clarified to me to the table here. First, I regard what we're doing in transitioning this land over under the rezoning of PC3 is very similar to what we did with a lot of codes that we brought over from the CAD county from day one. We knew that certain things needed to be cleaned up and we made the necessary adjustments. I see this as the same situation. The downside that I was concerned with with doing that was that would we be losing control and in a worst-case scenario of property being sold to a different REIT or a different community director being in hand, which we all have a comfort level with, that that not be the case? I was put at rest somewhat by the four conditions that were initially put forth by the planning commission. There was a fifth that was added by Commissioner Jack Honner. And what I thought I liked about that one in particular was the emphasis to have city council be able to come in and have a say. I struggled with what was called substantial though, at that point, because there was no definitive term for substantial and that was the criteria upon which it would either move forward or not. And it was an objective rather than a subjective review. But then going back and looking at the ordinances and looking under section 27, 845, where it talks about modification and changes to conditions on zoning amendments, it pretty much clearly states what the restrictions are and what the controls are. And I have to tell you, after going through this and making sure that I was aware of the details, I don't have the fear that I had that we would be losing control. I mean, some of the points in here, there are seven of them in particular, and it covers just about every major issue that we could be looking for. The movement of any building or structure, any increased number of dwelling, a decrease in the minimum size of residential units imposed versus conditional zoning, any change in buffer requirements, any change in height of building, any change in proportion of floor space, any changes, any changes to conditions except minor changes, which we would yield anyway, subsequent to 27, 845A, imposed by the city council when approaching any change to the official zoning map, commonly referred to as a rezoning or rezoning amendment. It would have to come to city council. Because in eight years, Highwoods is driven by market conditions, so to expect them to come back a week later and do a submission on the plan is not a realistic request. These are expensive propositions. I think by doing it PC3, we allow the opportunity to move forward and this is a market-driven situation and it is going to take, it's not going to happen next year. We're probably looking at four years of the earliest, I would guess, probably eight and 10 years out. We're looking at the long-term plan here. And it really modifies our codes to allow us to be flexible without losing control. Control is important here, because I don't want a rampant situation, because in eight years, if something goes bad at city council, it's going to be taking the rap. So I just wanted to bring this clarification out on this ordinance and bring it into the equation for the record here.
With all due respect...
Section 27, 845. Go ahead, Jim.
I guess with all due respect, you know, at this point, I don't believe we have sufficient information to understand whether we are making changes pursuant to that code section. We have no building layouts, we have no buffers shown on the drawing, we really have nothing other than a bubble diagram that lists some areas that are going to be developed, you know, and in going through and adding up, we've got, you know, the existing square footage is 1.76 million, they're requesting an additional 1.975 million square feet and 500 apartments, but we have nothing that shows where that square footage is going to be located, how the parking is going to work, how the street's going to improve, you know.
That's a site-specific plan that still has to be submitted.
Exactly, but, you know, it's going to be very difficult to take the items that are in the code that you referenced when there's no building shown on the plan and figure out whether there's a change in the building footprint.
Susan, how's the master plan correlate to this?
The master plan is part of the condition number one requirement and it has the master plan with the actual pod layout description identifying...
But it doesn't show any proposed buildings. It doesn't show any proposed parking lots. It doesn't show any proposed roads, is that correct? It only shows existing.
That's correct.
But that's the difference between a master plan and a site plan. A master plan identifies areas assigned with acreage with a list of intended uses. Again, I can only describe it best to you as creating a mini zoning ordinance for that specific development. The level of specificity I think Mr. Hyer is looking for is what's found in a site plan, not in a master plan. You would never want any owner to come in with a master plan that has multiple years in which to build it out to give you that level of specificity, because I can tell you right now, with every confidence that I have, it would never be built that way, never.
But the Brookley came in that way. You know, their site plan has been evolving over the course of...
Site plan versus a master plan, there's a difference.
Their site plan has been evolving. You know, I guess the concern I have is this, is that on December 17, we brought over 14,000-plus parcels. They were all zoned and we maintained the zoning. I'm sure there were a lot of owners that would have liked to have had their parcel designation or their partial zoning changed at that time, except we chose to bring them over as is. Here, we have a same situation. We effectively are bringing this parcel into the city of Brookhaven, but yet, rather than bringing it in and asking the owner to do the same that those 14 other parcels, 14,000 other parcel owners are required to do, they should ask to change the zoning of the property, we're saying, no, we're going to circumvent that and we're just going to give them a zoning that they haven't necessarily requested, but is different than what they have. And I see some inequities in that.
That's a good point, Jim. It's a, you know, gives me thought. But the difference between now and then is, you know, December 17, you know, was our first, we were in a different situation. Now, where we've brought all the codes over, we're going back through and changing things as we go. I mean, what an opportunity to show the business community what Brookhaven can do when, you know, now we've got our sea legs under us somewhat and we're setting our own policy. And this is something new, we haven't had any, there have not been 14,000 parcels seeking annexation in the Brookhaven. There are 14,000 existing. This is a brand-new thing, it's a new parcel and it's, you know, a big parcel, it's a major parcel, and I think it's an opportunity for us to show the metro area and the region what we can do and what Century Center can become under the leadership provided by Brookhaven and Brookhaven staff. So I think it's a, it's a good point because I do see the, how... because I do see the, how one could say, oh, that's not fair. I came in and you didn't give me, you didn't even give me the opportunity to ask for a rezoning. But now that we have an established government, we have an established staff that we trust, we have the opportunity to do things differently and show, set the standard for how things are done. And although I see your point and I agree with it somewhat, I think that this is a different situation than it was seven months ago.
You know, along the same lines, in my mind, I think we're just running roughshod over the zoning because we've heard already that we're providing, and I'm not even sure that council has the authority to provide these variances, we're providing a variance to have private versus public streets. We're providing a variance for certain areas to be more dense than is allowed by the PC-3 zoning. We're providing a variance, there's a requirement of the PC that 50% of the area in certain, within the plan has to be residential. You know, they're less than 20% if you look at an average apartment area. So, you know, there's a whole list of variances that we are approving if, in fact, we approve this master plan as PC-3. I'm not sure that we have that authority, nor am I comfortable granting those variances, again, without seeing additional information as to what it is. And, you know, and along those same lines, I mean, we've heard that staff has reviewed these. But as I go through the report, I see that we have nothing from Public Works, we have nothing from the Fire March, we have nothing from the Board of Education, we have nothing from Watershed Management to understand whether these zoning densities are consistent or can be supported by the infrastructure that's in place out there.
I think it's a good thing that we could possibly defer this to have more time to talk about all these things.
One, yeah, one last point on it is that, you know, I, I want to reiterate, you know, that I look at this from, you know, what are the advantages and disadvantages? I've already gone through those. But I also want our city to be consistent across all of our decisions. And if we have what appears to be, I do not see a difference in our rezoning as the city supplying the code. And if the applicant, the property owner, came to us and rezoned, that process should be the same. We can't hold, we can't give preferential treatment just because we're the city and we know that's the right treatment. Because what about the next time the city sees something where somebody wants to come and make a PC-3, but they're inside the city, so they're not getting an annexation? And we say, well, you've got to hold to the letter of the law and what the rezoning process is. How are we able to then say, well, we did it this way, but...
Same way.
Yeah, but in this case, we don't have a full site plan or a full master plan. And I'm, is a site plan required for PC-3 or just a master plan?
And the PC-3 site plan.
So, so we're saying to this property owner, well, we're not going to require the site plan, but all future ones, we're saying, well, we are going to hold to that.
I don't know if we are. I don't know if the staff will recommend it. I don't know if that's what we'll do. If it's a parcel somewhere, like if it's somewhere on Peach Street, we might want to do the same exact thing. Because it's something that's bought and it's, might be five or six years down the road, you know? It might be the same thing. I want to be consistent.
I'm sorry, I apologize, mayor. And there is a point in which the staff will have a site plan because we have to have a site plan. And then we'll have a land development plan, and we'll have building plans, and all those plans, and hydrology studies, and transportation studies, and all those things that we need to do to review to that and compare to the PC requirements and the conditions to be able to make sure that, as it moves forward, it moves forward appropriately.
Yeah, and I think the way that, the way the laws, the way we currently have our zoning ordinance, since it's on the books, they would have to come with a site plan. And I don't, I simply have a philosophical problem with saying it's okay because we're going to not require it.
Is no waiver allowable? We're not allowed to waive it?
I mean, I don't know.
Just on an annexation, we can waive those requirements?
The difference here upon annexation, you, the city, are the petitioner to assign the zoning. The property owner is not seeking that. That was a determination made by staff when the application came in.
Because of the annexation.
Because of the annexation, that was different.
And I, you know, I know it would be a great sign of business efficiency. And I think the end result would be identical. You know, I think the Planning Commission, and I certainly believe, I think the staff's making the right recommendation. I see no downside to it. There's no wait time for them to submit an application. It's just, let's play, let's play them by the same rules that we're going to hold everybody accountable to. And I think that's the proper, that's the right image and message I'd like to see.
Alright. Joe, did you have something? Alright. Rebecca?
I just have one more question. Marie, you said that, maybe, no, I think it was Marie. The developer here, is their annexation petition contingent upon the PC-3 zoning? Because I understand that you're faced with uncertainty.
Correct.
And I have heard that Highwoods feels like that they've had to go through, you know, quite a process to get various rezonings and slops through DeKalb County. And all of that's very costly and time-consuming. I wonder if there isn't some way that, under the roof of PC-3, that we couldn't maybe add a condition that says we still need to approve the site plan?
And that's what I mentioned earlier in my earlier comments. First of all, the property owner is seeking annexation predicated on their intent of development to finish out their project known as Century Center. And it is contingent on that. They did not discover, decide, ask for this particular classification. It could be 820. I mean, that's not what they sought in their application for annexation. It was staff's review of their intent, and their intent is predicated on their request for annexation. So, what I would ask you to consider is so that, and just to make mention of, Ms. Williams, what you just said about their, the owner's concern of the cumbersome nature that they have dealt with over the years, the lack of moving things through when they were trying to respond to an end-user for their project, that it would take months and quite a bit of money to develop plans and to go through and change those plans and never really have a certainty that they were permitted to do it unless they went down this very long road. What I would ask you, and what I mentioned earlier, is, you know, you're looking at a master plan as part of an annexation application that identifies uses for the future. I think your real determination is to decide, is, can you live with that? If you're wanting specificity, you have the ability to condition it with a site plan that once those pods develop, that a site plan pursuant to the PC-3 come in. So, you could do that. But I think we would be remiss not to make mention that the property owner seeking annexation contingent on the ability to develop their master plan, their project to its final state of build-out. So, I think your first question to yourselves is, can you accept these densities and these lists of uses? That's number one. I've already mentioned that we have reviewed the level of service to be able to service this type of development with its densities. Second to that, if that is something you can accept, but you still want that level of specificity as others would have to do in initiating a PC-3 zoning, then I would encourage you to take a look at conditioning it further and requiring a site plan to be submitted for your review and final approval, recommended and reviewed by your planning director.
Thank you. Alright. Any other business? Okay. Do we need executive session?
Yes.
Okay. For a legal matter?
For a legal matter, yes.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I move for executive session.
Second it.
Any discussion? All in favor of adjourned for executive session, signify so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I wouldn't think this would be more than 15, 20 minutes.
No longer than that.